Just want to let folks know that the city council is still in executive session. They'll be with you as soon as they're done.
Okay, I guess Bob is having trouble. And Jonathan too. We'll just wait a few more minutes. Up there's Jonathan.
Hi guys.
Hi. Hi.
Thank you.
Bob said it would take a few minutes for the computer to reboot.
He did he text you?
No, he said that before he signed off. He said he's got to give him a couple of minutes for his computer to reboot. So. I mean, turning it off, turning it back on, if he's got a, if it's bogged down by a lot of stuff, it'll take a few minutes.
Sometimes it takes a while just to turn it off. Windows is like, are you sure you want to shut down?
Tell me 10 different ways to Sunday whether you want to shut down.
We're going to do this.
We'll give him a few more minutes to sign on. Okay, I guess Bob is having trouble. And Jonathan too. We'll just wait a few more minutes. Up there's Jonathan.
Hi guys.
Hi. Hi.
Thank you.
Bob said it would take a few minutes for the computer to reboot.
He did he text you?
No, he said that before he signed off. He said he's got to give him a couple of minutes for his computer to reboot. So. I mean, turning it off, turning it back on, if he's got a, if it's bogged down by a lot of stuff, it'll take a few minutes.
Sometimes it takes a while just to turn it off. Windows is like, are you sure you want to shut down?
Tell me 10 different ways to Sunday whether you want to shut down.
We're going to do this.
We'll give him a few more minutes to sign on. We're almost to 20 pass. What do you think? Think we can just, I hate to do this to him, but. He's running slowly getting there. He's getting there, he said. I think we're going to just start, if that's all right with everyone. Will someone else, if Council Stackpole isn't on and isn't here to do the pledge of allegiance, will someone else do it?
I don't mind doing it.
All right, so Deputy Mayor will do the pledge of allegiance unless I see him online, but I just want to get started. Okay, this is the regular meeting of the Sanford City Council, Tuesday, November 23rd, 2021. This meeting will be conducted by a remote video and teleconference pursuant to one MRSA section 403B to D and section 6 of the Sanford City Council rules of procedure as amended and adopted August 3rd, 2021, reflecting recent recommendations of the US CDC and adoption by the state of Maine CDC pertaining to the conduct of meetings indoors in the public space. Members of the public may join the meeting by phone by dialing 1-929-205-6099 using meeting ID 815-5066-8232 and password 113464 or via computer at the link provided on the city's website. Members of the public may also submit comments via the state of Stanford website at www.sanfordmaine.org under email city department city council. First item on the agenda is the pledge of allegiance and I am going to ask the deputy mayor to lead us in the pledge and the moment of silence. If everyone else will please mute their computers so that we only hear one voice. I would appreciate that. Deputy Mayor, the floor is yours.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We'll now have a moment of silence.
Thank you. Thank you Deputy Mayor. Next item is the roll call. Council Martell.
Present.
Council Hanselman.
Present.
Council Tuttle is absent with notice. Council Stackpole.
I, uh, present.
Excellent. Council Lanigan.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Hurley.
Present.
And I'm Mayor Anne Marie Mastrocchio and we're joined this evening by the city manager Stephen Buck and Larissa Ricketts, the city manager's executive assistant. Minutes. Twenty-one dash five four one dash zero one. Ordered to approve the minutes from the regular city council meeting held on Tuesday, November 9th, 2021. I will just remind Council Lanigan that he was not present. Um, do I have a motion to approve?
Move we approve.
Second.
By that, a motion by Council Stackpole? Was that a second by the deputy mayor?
Yes.
Any discussion? Seeing none, I will call the roll. Council Martell.
Yes.
Council Hanselman.
Yes.
Council Stackpole.
Yes.
And I'm Council Lanigan.
Abstained.
Deputy Mayor Hurley.
Yes.
And I am also a yes. That is one, two, three, four, five yeses, wait, yes, five yeses and one abstention. Sorry, not counting well this evening. Twenty-one dash five four two dash zero one. Ordered to approve the minutes from the executive session of the city council held on Tuesday, November 9th, 2021. Do I have a motion to approve?
So move.
Second.
Motion by Deputy Mayor, second by Council Stackpole. Any discussion? Then I'll call the roll. Council Martell.
Yes.
Council Hanselman.
Yes.
Council Stackpole.
Yes.
Council Lanigan.
Abstained.
Deputy Mayor Hurley.
Yes.
And I am also a yes. That is five in favor with one abstention. Okay, Mayor's report, the city council subcommittee reports, and I will begin. And I will apologize right up front, it is a little bit longer than usual because I thought there were some things that happened in subcommittee that I thought were worth reporting in more detail. The municipal operations and property subcommittee met and discussed a number of issues that are not addressed on this evening's agenda. The committee reviewed the dumpster ordinance and determined that the city should try education regarding dumpster use and placement requirements. When spring arrives, enforcement will be stepped up. Committee will revisit the issue if necessary. Clearing snow from sidewalks was a problem last winter, partially due to inoperable sidewalk snow removal equipment. The committee reviewed ordinances. I think there are some people that do not have their. Computers muted. If they could please do that because I can hear ambient noise. Larissa, could you take care of that, please? Thank you. Clearing snow from sidewalks was a problem last winter, partially due to inoperable sidewalk snow removal equipment. The committee reviewed ordinances from several communities and discussed whether or not to recommend requiring homeowners and businesses to take some responsibility for clearing their own sidewalks. It was decided to see how things go this year with a full complement of sidewalk plows while continuing to prioritize sidewalk routes to schools and snowbank removal downtown. Public safety subcommittee discussion centered primarily on police department news and activities. Chief Anderson introduced Officer Jeremy Riddle and Officer Samuel Bennett, two new blue pin officers who will now work where they live. Chief Anderson also reported that the citizens advisory group has been very successful. Currently, the group numbers around 23. They continue to attract new members and anyone who is interested in participating is encouraged to contact Deputy Chief Small. Their group has been identifying the top citizen related issues in the city. Their top four priorities are homelessness, substance abuse disorder, community outreach, police department funding, and neighborhood watch. While discussion and work is ongoing on all four topics, two neighborhood watch groups have been created. One in the state Mason Charles Street area and the other on High Street. Deputy Chief Eric Small presented information about the options clinicians. Charlie Flag resigned her position with Sweetser on October 26th. DC Small and Detective Adams will be working with Sweetser to identify a person who would be a good fit for the mental health unit. Sweetser expects to hire that person as soon as possible. The city received $20,000 from the Department of Public Safety and the Options Program for reimbursement of the work conducted by the department's community outreach coordinator between June 1st and October 1st of this year. The department expects to receive further funding from DPS this year through a memorandum of understanding with options. Chief Anderson and DC Small have been having ongoing meetings with Maine Behavioral Health to develop a partnership to house a clinician of Stanford Police Department. They were only able to offer a peer support specialist for a few hours a week. This makes developing a working relationship with officers very difficult and is not enough time to have an impact. It would be hard to connect with clients with any form of consistency. Therefore, the department would like to hire a clinician with experience around homelessness and substance use disorder to be a member of the mental health unit and a full-time employee of the city. This person would have a caseload to conduct follow-up and respond to calls for service with the mental health unit officer. This non-uniformed response would relieve uniformed officers for other calls for service, allowing them to handle other complaints and do proactive policing around traffic enforcement, for example. This individual would also work with all city departments as a critical part of our crisis intervention and stress management team. Deputy Chief Small met with Finance Director Ronnie Champlin and discussed the budget impact. He provided her with salary expectations and discussed the possibility of using ARC money to fund this for three years. Detective Colleen Adams reported on the extensive activities of the mental health unit. She and intern Jonathan Phillips, who works Thursdays and Fridays, Friday, responded to 71 calls over the past month concerning homelessness, substance use disorder, and mental health issues. Jonathan will be working with the department until May. I have asked that Detective Adams report on her work at a future council meeting. Officer Christopher Brown, in partnership with Sanford Housing Authority, has engaged the elderly community with the program Coffee with a Cop at the Maples, Village View, and Sunset Towers. Director Diane Gary reports the residents have enjoyed interacting with Officer Brown as he offers advice on fraud protection and phone scams. The economic development subcommittee met to consider whether to apply for a facade grant offered through the State Department of Economic and Community Development. It was decided to proceed with the application. The final item discussed with consideration of a special assessment district in the downtown to fund downtown specific activities. Local property taxes support downtown maintenance such as plowing the Midtown Mall parking lot, snow removal, cleaning up litter, and landscaping. Approximately $75,000 per year is spent from taxation specific to the Midtown Mall. This does not include capital improvements to the parking lot such as paving. After much discussion, the committee decided to look further into ways the city might recoup some of those tax-funded expenses that benefit primarily the Midtown Mall businesses. And finally, I believe that Council Tuttle is home from the hospital. It would probably appreciate any cards and well wishes and phone calls. I hear he's pretty bored. He's sick of being sick. That's all I have this evening. I know that Council Hanselman is prepared to make a report for the Friends of Downtown. Council Hanselman?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I know it's not a true subcommittee of the council, but I think it's really important that the council be apprised of the work happening and also, of course, if there's any input that folks would like to provide to the organization or the group, it being certainly appreciated. But the Friends of Downtown has been meeting every two weeks for almost five months now. There is a great group of folks. It's really diverse, includes business owners, residents, and people that are just really passionate about Sanford. We've connected with over 60 local businesses with events and outreach that we've done, which feels pretty awesome. The mission of the Friends of Downtown is to foster more economic revitalization and community spirit that will generate a sense of pride and create a community where people will desire to live, work, and play in. A lot of. A lot of what we're doing is hoping to work in concert with existing organizations and to add on or highlight existing work being done as well as to create some new initiatives. We're working on building social media presence online as though. So folks that haven't followed the Friends of Downtown Sanford page, I urge you to do that. We recently raised over $6,000 thanks to really generous local donors and we're preparing to apply for grants coming up soon. The next event that we're joined in is the annual tree lighting on December 3rd. We'll be there with a giant human-sized snow globe photo booth that Deputy DC Small demoed for us. It's pretty cool. We'll be taking pictures for folks. And then we're also looking to some other events coming up in February and March. We meet Wednesdays at 4:30 and the next meeting is December 1st if anybody's interested. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Hanselman. I don't think there were any other subcommittee reports from counselors. I don't see any. Okay, then I will go on to the city manager's report.
We can't hear you Steve.
I think you might be muted Steve.
I'm muted. I apologize for that. So, reporting out on non-agenda items this evening, the CGA cleanup on the New Dam Road. Again, it's a project of over 10 years in making, soon coming to a successful close. The former Brownfield site, which the city acquired over 10 years ago. The property on New Dam Road was once littered with trash such as circuit boards, metals, tires, cans, and clothing, concrete, and various items. It's now the site has been cleared of these debris, waste and trees, with only a small portion of contaminated soil remaining. Following remediation in December and revegetation in the spring will allow Walden Renewables to begin the installation of a solar farm on said lot. Solar energy generated will be applied to the virtual Sanford renewable energy corridor. That was part of the basis of our application to Region 1 EPA, which gained us the $800,000 multipurpose grant by which the energy created from the solar project on the city-owned section of the solar farm will be slated for use by developers in the downtown Mill District providing an additional incentive. by developers in the downtown mill district, providing an additional incentive for redevelopment in this key area. So where we started, uh, over ten years ago, the city acquired the property when it looked like this. Recycling Center used to do circuit boards there, and that was in an era where the circuit boards were basically, it's a sheet of, of fiberglass coated with copper, and then the circuitry was etched by acid, using acid into those, uh, creating the circuit boards. This company took those scrap ends under, uh, under the theory that they were going to mine the copper from the, the fiberglass materials, uh, and recycle that. That never occurred. So the city acquired the property about eleven or twelve years ago, been working on it ever since. As of today, it looks like this. Been fully remediated, it's now been prepped for the solar installation. And we're very proud of the fact of the partnership that's come forward, not just with the renewable energies, but we worked with the main turnpike authority on this as well. Main Turnpike Authority has a hundred and ten acres of budding, the seventeen-acre city site, uh, that was part of a environmental mitigation program for the expansion of the, of the southern portion of the turnpike. Um, that actually, that project actually failed. When we started on the solar initiative, uh, and wanted to utilize the budding hundred and ten, hundred and fifteen acres, the restrictive covenants allowed only walking and picking of wildflowers. We're now proud to say we worked with DEP, Army Corps of Engineers, and the main turnpike authority. Those acres are now going to be put to use, uh, for a mega wa, um, a approximately fifteen megawatt solar project. So, uh, very good work by all parties. Also, excuse me, I'm also happy to report out that of the prior estimates and authorization, uh, as we've laid out here, for about nine-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand dollars in project costs to perform this remediation, we now reasonably believe there's going to be a hundred and fifty to two-hundred-thousand dollars of that returned back, which will allow for continued use under the multipurpose grant for, towards the, um, uh, international woolen properties in the downtown adjacent to the Sanford Mill, as well as accomplishing the uh, market analysis for the downtown that's been envisioned for several years. So, getting ready to close that project out, we'll bring you the final, uh, detail on that, but it will be significantly under what was previously authorized. West Side Village Construction, that was the major road construction project for this, this summer season. It actually ended up, had to, had to, had to break that into two years because we had a singular bidder on it, which is Sergeant Corporation. They thought they could accomplish it this year, but they're no different than anybody else. Staffing shortages, thus they couldn't get the mobilization and the equipment in here. They started late in the season and had to split it. But for this year, we've completed the base, all of the, um, box cuts, water, sewer, uh, utility improvements that needed to be done below the street, as well as storm drains and catch basins have been completed. So, um, all of Kimball Street, half of Shaw and half of Prescott have their, uh, base layer of pavement down. They're working now on the, um, excuse me, the slip form, which is an extruded concrete form of curbing. And they'll be installing the sidewalks, uh, starting next week. That will close them out for this year. They're only installing the sidewalks that are going to have slip form and asphalt, the, uh, one block, part of the project that has concrete sidewalks there, the monolithic pores, those will be hammered out and replaced next season, not this season. So Sergeant will be back in the spring to, uh, address the other half of Shaw and Prescott and Twombly, as well as finishing out the sidewalk installations in the entire district. Also with our public works department, we were supposed to have a meeting today with the main department of transportation around the, uh, public partnership initiative in our downtown. Um, we were discussing the timing and the new advent of the federal infrastructure bill as to how that could favorably, could favorably bolster our project. Previously, we had that project inside of the main department of transportation's multi-year work plan, uh, with the earliest anticipated, um, start of construction, twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five was the more plausible. With the advent of the federal infrastructure bill, the department is, is considering our project of about ten million dollars to be funded out of their anticipated portion of that infrastructure, uh, funding, thus moving us back to the twenty-twenty-four timeline, so a very positive response for us in that regard. On the downside, though, is the long-awaited Cottage Street pro, uh, project is going to be put off for an additional year. Uh, the main department of transportation was doing all of that design work in-house. They've lost staffing to the point that they couldn't get that accomplished timely. They've now, uh, put that out to VHB to finish that engineering, which is good news for us because VHB's been doing all of our work in our downtown anyways. Uh, so they've pushed this from twenty-twenty-two start to twenty-twenty-three start for Cottage Street now. Fire department, uh, has also reached out to our congressional offices, looking for what does the federal infrastructure bill have for that type of infrastructure that might assist the city with the, with the future construction of two new fire departments? Uh, so they're starting to look into those avenues. And we're also waiting in anticipation, so over the last two days, AC Arnold has been involved in the public hearings with the main EMS board, who is going through their technical rulemaking to figure out as to whether they're going to mandate COVID-nineteen vaccinations for EMS providers for, uh, as a part of the require, uh, licensure requirements for the EMS license. They've also now have swept in various other levels of vaccinations that they have under consideration. The difficulty that I have with this is they, they, we put, um, several workers out for an interim period of time when the interim rule came in, in play, and we were mandated to do that. That temporary rule actually lapsed on November twenty-first, so we've called them back because they're allowed to work again. The EMS board had their, their hearings on the twenty-second and twenty-third yesterday and today. Uh, their comment, public comments are allowed through December third, yet their date for, uh, enactment of the rule is actually December first. So it's, long story short, it's been a mishmash and it's been a fiasco. Uh, we're continuing to deal with that as to what the final outcome will be. Uh, also today, I attended the York County, uh, EMA, Emergency Management Authority updates. Uh, it was not good news again today as far as COVID is concerned. Uh, we, as the city, as a large employer, we've had a number of close contacts as of late, positive tests. Uh, we've been doing significant amounts of testing because of the D and the U variants. We exhausted, uh, last week, we exhausted all of our, uh, buy next now test kits, robbed from all of the departments to get it, the testing done. Uh, and a day later on Thursday, we exhausted those on Wednesday. On Thursday, we had a shipment of another hundred come in, and we've got a regular rotating shipment that, that will be coming to us now, uh, to keep the adequate number of test kits that we need to respond to the continuation of the pandemic. State hit record highs of a thousand ninety-seven new cases, uh, yesterday, eighty-nine associated with outbreaks, twenty-eight new deaths, fourteen came from vital records. Hospitalizations hit a record, two-hundred-and-two in non-ICU beds, ninety-six in ICU, forty on ventilators. And the positivity rate is up to nine-point-seven percent. When the EMA staff also looks at the trends in New Hampshire and Massachusetts, because typically Maine follows those by two-week delay. Uh, neither, neither of those two straights, uh, states are trending in a positive manner. So, uh, the indication is the next four to six weeks, uh, now through, uh, at least the new year are going to be even more problematic than what they've been as of late. They also gave indications that pharmacies are absolutely overwhelmed right now. Uh, the, uh, Adam Hartwig gave a, an account of talking with the pharmacists, pharmacists that actually broke down while they were, uh, working via Zoom, you know, phone conference, just because the overload, uh, because the pharmacies have been tasked with, you know, performing rapid and PCR tests, uh, COVID vaccinations, flu vaccinations, and filling prescriptions. He said many pharmacies are three to five days out now, being able to fulfill subscription, uh, subscri, prescriptions, I'm sorry, because they're so overwhelmed with all of the other duties that have been forced upon them. Looking at the hospital statistics, it's not favorable. Uh, forty-six percent of patients in the hospital with COVID-nineteen are vaccinated at this point. Uh, so the physicians talked about the need to fully reinforce the, uh, people to go get their booster shots. Is what they're observing is the earliest of people that were in that line of vaccinations of the, of the people that are been more susceptible to contracting the D and U variants. Twenty-six percent of hospitalized and vaccinated patients are in the ICU, are in ICU beds. Twenty-six percent of ICU patients with COVID are vaccinated. Forty-nine percent of the hospitalization and unvaccinated patients are in the ICU. Twenty-one percent of hospitalized and unvaccinated patients are on ventilators. Uh, so there, there are currently no patients on a ventilator, though, that are vaccinated. So that's a huge stat right there. And those who are unvaccinated are more than twice as likely to require ICU level of care should they contract COVID and end up at the hospital. They continue to talk about that and that the pending advent of the MERC and other oral medications that are, are coming online should significantly reduce the number and the severity of hospitalizations. And hospitals cannot currently keep pace delivering the, um, mono-colonal antibody treatments, which have to be done by IV. Hospitals are absolutely overwhelmed at this point in time. Other statistics that, uh, we received via this update, um, you know, cases in York County, five-hundred-and-twenty-six for the day. Uh, case rate is two-fifty-three for a hundred thousand. Our positivity is higher than the state average, we're at ten-point-three-two percent. Uh, eighty-three-point-one percent of our population over the age of twelve are fully vaccinated at this point in time, and there were thirteen new hospital admissions for the day. Vaccination statistics, when you take into account, uh, all of York County's, uh, populations that are qualified, so this is starting at five and older, where eighty-three-point-eight percent vaccinated. Uh, twelve and older are ninety-two-point-nine percent, and over the age of sixty-five, we're ninety-nine-point-nine percent. So again, when they're reporting out the hospital statistics, for example, Massachusetts, their highest demographic of hospitalized patients are twenty to twenty-nine. It's not the elderly population at this point. Maine is that thirty-to-forty-year range that's occupying a majority of the beds at this point in time, so. I also encapsulate, as the mayor reported, I encapsulated the police report in here. It was an incredible report that the mayor encapsulated, I won't go into that. But I captured it here in the manager's document, because I wanted to ensure that, that high level of, of quality work that they've been doing over the last number of months really comes to the front for public recognition because it has been absolutely phenomenal, and I thank the department for that. That's all I have for this evening, thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Um, any questions from counselors concerning the, um, issues that the city manager might have brought to your attention? I don't see any hands. Uh, before I go on to communications and presentations, I just need to make a note that I forgot to do at the beginning. Um, I don't know if anybody's noticed, but the agenda was republished today to include three public hearings that were inadvertently left off the agenda. These three public hearings, though, were advertised for the requisite ten days in advance, both in the Portland Press Herald and the Sanford-Springdale News. It was total, all of us kind of had this, we blanked on it. So, um, that's why you will see, if you saw in your first agenda, you didn't see any public hearings. There are three public hearings relating to three items, um, under new business that we're going to be voting on this evening. So, first, I'm going to continue now with communications and presentations. Twenty-one dash five-four-three dash zero-one, promotions within the Sanford Police Department. And I think, um, Chief Anderson is going to, um, take this over. I see you, chief, you are.
I'm, yeah, we're broadcasting from the police department, which is.
I thought that was the police department.
It's a big thank you to Dan Martner, we really stepped up and helped us out to get us going over here. As you can see in the background, there's quite a bit of our team this year and some of our team's family. So, um, we wanted to definitely thank you, the council and Mr. Buck, for allowing us to present all the recent accomplishments of two of our team members. Um, take just a moment to say, uh, promotions are one of the most important internal events for our agency in the city. The development, selection, and continual education of our supervision and our supervisors is part and parcel of the foundation of the, of the police department, and certainly consistent with our accomplishing our mission of providing excellent law enforcement service. Uh, the leaders of our agency officially recognized with rank or even unofficially recognized by the esteem of their peers are certainly, uh, responsible for the success of our department. And we adhere to the idea that there are no bad teams, only bad leaders. So with that in mind, growing good leaders and providing them with the nutrients necessary to thrive is an absolute necessity here for the, for the police department and for the city. Um, for us, the rank of sergeant is the first official step in leadership, and it's not an easy step. The transition from peer to supervisor happens overnight and yet requires forevermore constant attention as the leadership is filled with dichotomies of too much and too little oversight. And our leaders must never stop learning, never stop growing intellectually or emotionally, and certainly always striving to improve themselves in our team and our community. So tonight, we recognize the top two candidates from a promotional process of seven well-prepared officers. Who I'd like to bring forward, Sergeant Tom Sear, Sergeant Eddie Murphy, post. Sergeant Thomas C. Sear, Sergeant Eddie H. Murphy. The city of Sanford and the Sanford Police Department has given special trust and confidence in your integrity, valor, leadership, and professional excellence. In view of these qualities and your dedicated service, you are therefore promoted to the rank of sergeant.
Can we clap? There's all clapping going on, Chief Anderson.
Congratulations.
You too.
Congratulations, thank you for your service.
As you can see, they're joined by their families tonight, and it's, it's really an important thing. And again, we want to thank you for letting us present this to you. I think that's all we.
And thank you for, for doing that. You can always do these presentations at our council meetings, happy to have them. I love to have the community see it. And congratulations to Sergeant Sear and Sergeant Murphy and their families. Thank you. Okay, next presentation, twenty-one dash five-four-zero dash zero-one. Presentation of Sanford Airport Solar Photos and Recent Article in Airport Improvement Magazine. Um, Allison Navia, the airport manager, will be presenting that this evening. Allison, the floor is yours.
Good evening, my name's Allison Navia, I'm the airport manager of the Sanford-St. Coast Regional Airport. It's my pleasure tonight to present to you our complete final airport solar project photos, as well as the recent article that we had published in Airport Improvement Magazine recently. To back up a little bit, um, I was hired in June of two thousand thirteen as a part-time airport manager. One of the first things that I looked at was the airport's master plan. And I found that a lot of those projects that were in there had already been completed, a lot of work had been done at the airport, and we could see that a lot was still to be done. So one of the first big projects that I did was updating that airport master plan. When we started looking at that, we saw that there's a lot of, we had, really had a lot of property, there was a lot of land, and really got designated as surplus property in FAA's mind, because even if things went very, very well, um, and incredibly good on the aeronautical side, and we built a hundred more hangars, we still would never touch a lot of this other property in the infield and south of runway seven-two-five. So, the undertaking at that point was, what are we going to do with that property? You know, it's got a lot of restrictions on it, you can't have something that's tall, can't have something that's shiny, can't attract wildlife because you're crossing active airfield pavement, you can't have people coming and going all the time. Um, and it really was supposed to be aeronautical use only because of the covenants that are put on that airport property. So, a moratorium had just been taken off by FAA on any solar development. They wanted to see how it would go at bigger airports where they had some, some smaller projects, um, especially Denver, that was one of the big study airports. So we started looking into that and got everything designated in the master plan so that we could move forward with this. And we actually put a little earmark on all of that property for non-aeronautical development for the purpose of a solar project, and I started talking to Ranger Solar out of Yarmouth at that point. So we started kicking around the idea of it, and it just kept going from there as we kept going. As we kept going, um, I started to put together a lease agreement so that we could do a land lease. We started figuring out all the different parts and pieces that had to go into it, um, as far as there, you know, there were real estate issues, there were permitting issues with DEP. Uh, we actually had to talk to the attorney general of the state because nobody had permitted anything this way before. Um, and when we put together that lease agreement, I had three different terms to it. So there was the development term, the production term, once it was constructed and operating, and then at the very end, uh, there's a restoration term where they have a year to execute a bond and then take all of the equipment off of the property and return it to the same condition or better than, um, they originally got it in. So when we were going through and setting that development term, I said, okay, so what do you think? Like maybe a couple of years to get all the, the permitting done, um, and get all of our ducks in a row? And they said, no, we're going to need at least four years, and we should do a fifth option. And I just, I really didn't believe them, that it was going to take that long. And there we were in two thousand and twenty, five years later, just finally finishing the construction of the project. So it really did, when you read through the article, um, it, the reporter did a really good job of trying to succinctly go through all these different parts and pieces to get us to that point, um, where we were able to flip that big switch, um, and, and go live and start the production term. So the production term goes for thirty-five years. This project makes us financially self-sufficient as a department, so that means that taxation does not go towards running the operating cost of the airport any longer. When I very first started, we were taking about a hundred, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year, um, in, over and above what we were making in revenue to run the airport. Now, the amount of revenue that we're generating at the airport from leases, from fuel flowage fees, from contracts such as the maintenance of this project, including now the snow removal maintenance, we just, um, were able to sign that just a couple of weeks ago, uh, property taxes and things like aircraft excise tax, we're pushing a million dollars a year now in revenue, and that's annual revenue that's going to be recurring, where you add all of those parts and pieces up. So when I give presentations on the airport, I like to say that the airport's an economic engine that facilitates air traffic and emergency services and all those good things. And it's really not just a tagline, the airport is an economic engine. So we're using that, we're doing a really good job as a city in recognizing the value of it, and then, um, putting all of those things into play with the business plan, executing the ma, the master plan, doing these capital improvements. And one of the extra ways that this project, um, really benefits is we included tax increment financing as part of this project. So we not only included, as you scroll through, and Steve, you can move through some of the photos if we have them on there, we not only included the footprint of the project itself and where the panels are, but we also included some of the parts of the airport that we knew we would be developing in the short and midterm, so that we could utilize any of that tax revenue and keep that local in the city so that we could incentivize more development. And you'll see a couple of the public hearings that we have tonight, and then the action items under new business are actually direct results of this TIP district, um, that have now incentivized hangar development. So we were able to successfully use a non-aeronautical development to facilitate aeronautical development, which was part of the, uh, part of the, the whole goal of the entire thing. So you can see right there, we had some of the pilings put in. Gale Associates is one of our engineering consulting firms for the airport, and they were so kind to bring their drone, and they took some fantastic photos, those, uh, those pictures that we have. They also interviewed Joe Ridley and Matt Punske for the parts that they play in maintaining the solar field. So the amount of money that we make off of the vegetation management and the snow removal is almost just as much, if not more, than the actual land lease value. It also facilitates us to have different equipment, as far as mowing equipment and plowing equipment, that FAA might not necessarily cover. So in a, in a climate where the federal government is becoming less and less stable as far as how much money we're able to get from them and how reliable that is, projects like this become even more important because it kind of allows us to write our own ticket, um, and, and pay our own way to be able to get projects done and maintain that infrastructure. If you want to scroll through, I had a couple of pictures in there from the drone footage that, that Gale did for us. So this is the infield, so this is from the south looking north, and those are the panels that actually move and rotate. So if you're looking at this, um, on the other side of those panels, that's where the terminal building is with the cafe. So when you drive by on Route one oh nine, um, or on Airport Road, you can kind of see a few of these panels from that side, but you don't really get the scope of how big they are. So those, that green hangar, um, that's a hundred and twenty, you know, foot wide hangar that's over there. So you can kind of get an idea, that's a really big building, and the, the solar farm makes it look small. That's about forty-five acres panels right there. If you keep going through, I think I have another, another picture of the infield. This one, this is one of the really cool ones. This is the one that the magazine used, and this, you can kind of get an idea of the entire thing. It look, when you fly over it in an airplane, it looks like a lake. The size of it, the, the color of it and everything. So this is what we refer to as the Big Lot. This is south of runway seven-two-five. You can't see any of this from the road when you drive by. And then in the, in the distance there, you can see the infield that was just shown in a little more zoomed in. So all those panels are fixed. They don't move. So this is looking the opposite direction, so on the horizon there is the ocean, so that's looking to the southeast. That's another view of the Big Lot. And then this is looking over runway seven-two-five, again, towards that infield. So the infield, and when you see airports that are like ours, that have that triangular shape to them, that's the characteristic of an, a naval airfield. They wanted to practice landing on air carriers, which are always conveniently able to be pointed directly into the wind. So they would build three different runways, so pretty much no matter which way the wind was blowing, they would always land almost directly into it to practice. Problem with putting that into a civilian setting is that now you have three intersecting runways and no control tower. So that's not the most safe kind of situation. So when you're looking down right here, you're looking down taxiway Charlie, that's the one that we're gonna, um, reconstruct in the springtime. That used to be another old runway. So when you have this triangular shape, it makes it really difficult to do anything with all of that acreage that's in the middle there. So a lot of times you'll see at airports, it just goes unused, because you can't have people crossing active runways and taxiways, but this was a perfect use, um, of that, so that we're able to actually make revenue off of that, off of that acreage. I think there were maybe one or two more pictures. This is the approach to runway seven. Just to kind of give you a feel, the Glider Club was telling me that in the summertime, they can pick up thermals and actually gain altitude by circling over the, the Big Lot in the south, which is kind of neat. And those are those. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Allison. Um, can I just ask you, um, will this article be linked somewhere on the city's website so that people who want, I do just like, I think it, it really does showcase something. It's, you know, now the project is done, and this is what I think should be up there, not, you know, what we've had there in the past. So I, it's my request that we figure out a way to get this, uh, on our front page so that it's something that somebody who's interested in what's going on in Sanford, I think it would be something that they should see.
Yeah, I'll put the PDF of it and a link to the active, the, um, active digital copy as well.
That's wonderful. Any questions? I see Counselor Lanigan has his hand up, and he has not got his video on because he's, his, his internet is a little unstable, so he will only put his video on when he has to vote. Go ahead, Counselor Lanigan.
Thank you for that, and we need better internet in the city. Um, so, uh, Allison, I just heard, and councils that have, I've been with this the last few years, as, uh, you can attest to this, is working with someone like with, uh, with Allison is, is, is really, uh, a huge plus, uh, being a counselor, because she, she comes with a plan, and with that plan, um, she, she has built the, the confidence in, in, um, us approving things and, and looking more in a vision, visionary sense and stuff. And it's just nice having a director like this, um, in the city, and I just, uh, again, want to congratulate you, Allison, on the awesome job. You, you treat this place like your own business, and I think the results show it. And, uh, I just encourage, um, it across all planes, and it shows that government can work efficiently with the right people in the right seats. So thank you so much.
Anything from any other councilors? I don't see any hands up.
If I could just quickly add? Yeah, so this, this is, this is one of the Keystone, uh, projects for the city. When we started in this project, you know, Allison has given you an incredible summation of all of the work that she put into the FAA-specific elements and such under that. We fought such an uphill battle that, you know, we started with a small project, a, a five-megawatt project, that all state regulations said we couldn't do, and the economics wouldn't work. So we, we went grid scale with, with her approach to, uh, Ranger, Ranger Solar at that point in time to work on the airport, because the grid scale allowed us to get out around all of the lacking, the shortcomings in state, in state law at that point in time for solar development. And the administration at the state level at that point in time pointed a finger at us and said, you can't do, uh, solar as economic development. Uh, at every juncture in that project development, we were the first out of the gate. We were the first grid scale for the state of Maine. Uh, nobody knew how to tax the project, and our, our, our bond counsel and, and, uh, tax increment financing advisor, our legal, uh, attorney here, Shawna Mueller, is here with us this evening. We crossed all of those hurdles. The state didn't even know how to treat it for taxation. We cut the template for that, that the state uses now on how to tax a grid scale, the larger solar development. Um, and out of that, we achieved, when we looked at the national average, you could see from, uh, the various states, anywhere from five to eight thousand dollars per megawatt economic benefit back to the entity, the, the individual, the city that was working on the project. We achieved, uh, just under nineteen thousand dollars a megawatt for the first twenty-five years on this project, from having a well-structured project. So when I was going around the state, talking to other people about what Sanford was doing on solar development, I would put it this way, there's multiple ways to get an economic benefit out of a well-structured alternative energy project, and everybody just kind of, the deer in the headlights staring at you, what, what, what do you, what do you mean by that? And I think this is the epitome of that project, because of the cooperative elements, you know, roughly four, four and a half million dollars worth of fencing that was put in, that the airport doesn't have to pay for now, because it was incorporated into this project, the, the perimeter roads, all of the maintenance agreements and pieces that allow us to have cooperative hiring of staffing to share across different seasons because of the, of the loading of the need and such under that, the removal of environmental, environmental restrictions off the airport that gives us more developable space in the areas that we needed it to generate revenues in the, in the future. All of that was structured out of this project that just sort of everybody glazed over about. I'm very proud of the team of, of people that worked on this. Uh, it could not have been a more advantageous project for the city. So thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Did Counselor Stackpole, did you have your hand up?
I didn't. I was giving Allison a thumbs up.
Oh, okay. I can never tell, people are waving their hands. I don't see any other hands up, so thank you, Allison. We're going to see you again this evening. Twenty-one dash three five eight dash zero one, introduction of new City of Sanford Communications Coordinator. Go ahead, Steve.
Yes, I'm very, very pleased to, uh, introduce Ms. Jordan Wilton this evening. Uh, as the councilors know, this was a long time coming, about two years in the making to, um, get to a communications coordinator position, uh, as far as marketing and communications for the city. We did an extensive search, uh, for this particular position. Uh, the most qualified candidate, Ms. Wilton, was hired. Uh, she's a resident of Sanford. She grew up here and graduated from, she, as, as she says, the old high school, right? Right? Um, and after graduation, she graduated from Endicott College in Beverly, Mass, where she obtained her marketing degree. Uh, while at Endicott, she interned with the main women's fund in Falmouth, where she says, uh, her eyes were open to the many disparage, disparities and challenges Maine residents consistently face. Her professional experience includes working, uh, as a social media specialist for Massachusetts-based limousine and transportation service. Now she's excited to use her background as a lifelong resident and her marketing skills to jump into her position as a communications coordinator, is looking forward to sharing news about all of the great things happening in Sanford. Uh, I would also note that, uh, during the interview process, especially in the secondary portion of that, I was extremely impressed by the research and the insight that Ms. Wilton offered, uh, out of that process, examining, uh, all of the cities in the, in the state that, uh, what they're doing, how they're doing it, uh, what the positions were doing, likes, dislikes, pros and cons, and websites, social media, uh, implementation and such under that. Um, I handed her a multi-page document upon her first day of work, um, and, and I couldn't be more pleased with the progress that she's made just in the first week, getting control of our social media platforms as well as our website, and she's working on complete redesign and retrofitting, uh, of all of those elements. So Jordan, I'll turn it over to you to, to report out to the council as to what you've seen and learned so far.
Hi, um, nice to meet everyone. I'm so excited to be working, um, here in Sanford as my hometown. I'm a lifelong resident, so I feel like I have a good understanding of how great the city is, and especially in these last two weeks being there, I see how much hard work and essential work is being done in this town and how much people don't know about it. And so obviously, that's where I come in. And I really think that communicating with our residents and businesses in town is vital for Sanford's continued success. So, um, as Steve had mentioned, I am looking at kind of revamping the website, and just from talking to a lot of people my first week, that seems like an issue that many people in City Hall are behind. I think it's very jumbled, and residents can struggle to find exactly what they're looking for. Um, I'm also trying to, uh, I guess like revamp the Facebook and Instagram, just have a better outward image of Sanford. Like I said, there is a lot of really good stuff going on, but people just don't know about it, so hopefully a, um, more consistent, uh, social media presence will get some of that information out. Um, last Tuesday, uh, I had my first super to my eyes to how much the city council and, um, employees at City Hall are really doing in town. I also today toward Public Works, and my mind was just blown after I left there, just how much they do, how many miles of roads we haven't seen. But I just think that the biggest, my biggest takeaway these last two weeks is, like I said, how much great stuff is happening and how little it is being marketed towards, um, the residents in town. Um, so I'm really excited to jump in to it. I feel like I'm trying, but there's just, it's just so much new information and just so much going on that sometimes I do feel a little brain dead at the end of the day, but all in all, it's been a really good start, and I'm excited to see where we can take this.
Thank you, Jordan. Uh, we're really excited that you're on board as well, and once you get your feet under you and you've got a plan in place, at that point, I would really like to have a, um, a workshop with the council so that we can, um, be, um, kind of talk about where we're going in, in terms of how the coun, council can do a better job communicating with the public as well. So looking forward to...
Yeah, I'm looking forward to that, too. I am in the beginning stages of trying to put together a communication plan, so I've been looking at a few other cities, um, in the country and seeing what they're putting out. It's hard because you can't, social media and communication changes so fast, so some strategies that are five or six years old, that isn't necessarily relevant nowadays. So I think, too, it's important to create one that can kind of be with us for a little bit, but I definitely think like city council is such a great resource of putting information out there, and it'd be nice to have this, uh, citywide, I guess, initiative to educate our residents.
Thank you, Jordan. Anybody have any questions for Jordan? Well, I know last week was a really busy week for you, so I'm sure you're going to enjoy Thanksgiving.
Yes, I am.
Was hard for us, too, so it must have been doubly for you.
I can't imagine.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
Okay, public participation. I didn't, uh, is there anybody who would like to speak under public participation for items that are not on the agenda? I don't see any hands up.
Thanks, Steve. They're really, there's nobody here tonight. It's kind of weird.
That's nice. Okay, they're watching at home. They're watching on YouTube or on, uh, the streaming, they're just not on the Zoom.
Oh, they make their pies.
Oh, they make their pies. I understand.
Okay, public hearings. Twenty-one dash five four six dash zero one. A public hearing for the purpose of receiving public comments on a proposed credit enhancement agreement between the City of Sanford and Label Tech LLC relating to the development of lots or parcels of land on or adjacent to Presidential Lane at the airport and identified as hangar W five eight located within the Sanford Airport Omnibus Municipal Development and Tax Increment Financing District. I'm going to declare the public hearing open. And is there anybody to speak in favor? And I'm assuming that Allison, you're going to speak first?
Sure, I can give the rundown for this at this point if that's appropriate.
Okay, super.
So, this is part of that tax increment financing district that we created. This area is over west side of the airfield. The parcel is adjacent to Presidential Lane. So, the project, the economic development incentive that we created was the extension of the roadway and then all of the associated utilities that go with that. So, we ran three-phase power, high-speed fiber optic cable for internet, a whole sewer system, full water main and natural gas. So, for each person that ties into that, they're able to pay us an infrastructure fee that helps us cash flow the project upfront so that we can afford to pay the contractor to do the project. And then, we reimburse them through this instrument known as a credit enhancement agreement through their property taxes over time to pay them back that infrastructure fee. So, because we're able to do this within the TIP district, that's an extra economic incentive for someone to build a hangar at the airport. Otherwise, what you end up with is what a lot of airports end up with, just box hangars that are in the middle of the field that don't have any utilities to them. So, we're able to offer this, to have really state-of-the-art hangars that are built there. And both of these hangars, there's two of these agreements that are on the agenda tonight. So, this incentive is starting to work. One of them is a brand-new construction and one of them is existing construction that's been purchased privately and now improved. And they both house private jets.
Is there anyone else to speak in favor? Is there anyone to speak against? Seeing none, then I'll declare the public hearing closed. Twenty-one dash five four seven dash zero one. A public hearing for the purpose of receiving public comments on a proposed credit enhancement agreement between the City of Sanford and Sumner Properties LLC relating to the development of lots or parcels of land on or adjacent to Presidential Lane at the airport and identified as hangar W five nine located within Sanford Airport Omnibus Municipal Development and Tax Increment Financing District. I'll declare the public hearing open. And Allison, I'm assuming you're going to speak in favor of this as well?
Correct. Yep, in favor. So, this one, the only additional thing I'll say about this one is that the Sumner Properties hangar, that W fifty-nine, that not only houses a private jet, but it also houses a specialized aviation service operator. That's our multi-engine flight school, BDF Air. So, this one actually has a commercial business that has come out of this, this tax increment financing district and is operating in there as well.
Thank you. Is there anyone else to speak in favor? Anyone to speak against? Seeing none, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Twenty-one dash five four eight dash zero one. A public hearing for the purpose of receiving public comments on a proposed city council order that reads, "Shall the city council, one, approve a capital improvement project including infrastructure and road extensions located at the Sanford Seacoast Regional Airport and other expenses reasonably related thereto the project. Number two, appropriate a sum of up to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars plus any additional premium to fund the project. Three, authorize the mayor and treasurer to issue general obligation securities of the city, including temporary notes in anticipation of the sale thereof in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed two hundred and fifty thousand dollars plus any additional premium to fund the appropriation. And four, delegate to the mayor and treasurer authority and discretion to fix the date, maturities, interest rates, denominations, calls for redemption, with or without premium, form refunding agreements and other details of said securities, including authority to execute and deliver these securities certifications and agreements, including the execution of any loan agreements relating to the purchase and financing on behalf of the city." I'll declare the public hearing open. And is there anyone to speak in favor?
I can speak in favor to this one also.
Thank you.
This project, this is the main trunk line. This bond helps us pay for phase one of this construction. So, we're anticipating that we're going to have to phase this project in, over the course of three years. So, phase one gets us that main infrastructure and all of those utilities to the hangars that are being built immediately. So, this includes all of those utilities, but it doesn't include the final drainage treatment systems. It doesn't include the final paving and grading, all of that kind of stuff. So, those will come in subsequent years and be funded by a combination of probably additional bonds and more of those infrastructure fees that we get as more hangars are constructed. So, this, this was part of the budget process that was approved for last fiscal year. And this will let us pay the contractor for the work that's been done for phase one.
Is there anyone else to speak in favor? Anyone to speak against? Seeing none, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Present agenda. Twenty-one dash five three nine dash zero one. Unless there is objection, that item is approved. Full business. Twenty-one dash five one four dash zero one. Ordained amendments to the City Code, Chapter one one six, electrical standards to maintain conformity with the state's adopted electrical code, the National Electrical Code 2020 edition. This item must be read at two separate meetings. This is the second reading. Do I have a motion to approve?
So, move, Madam Mayor.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, that was a motion by Council Hanselman and the second by Deputy Mayor Hurley. Discussion by the council. I see no hands up. Steve, did you have something that you need to say about this or are we all set?
I believe we're all set on the, on the amendments to the electrical code. We've been through that several times now. Dr. Househill is here as well. If there's any comments or questions, refer to him. But this brings us up to the recently adopted standards by the state, makes us compliant with that. So, the contractors working in other communities as well as ours are all working under the same code.
Thank you. I don't see any, any hands up. So, I'm assuming there are no questions. So, I will call the roll. Counsel Martell?
Yes.
Counsel Hanselman?
Yes.
Counsel Tuttle is absent with notice. Counsel Stackpole?
Yes.
Counsel Lanigan?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hurley?
Yes.
And I am also yes. That is unanimous of all those present. Twenty-one dash four nine four dash zero one. Order to approve proposed zoning text and zoning map amendments associated with Townhouse Solar Proposal on Hanson Ridge Road. This item must be read on two separate occasions. This is the second reading. And Deputy Mayor Hurley has been, has requested to be recused from the discussion and the vote. Do I have a motion to approve?
Move or approve.
Motion by Counsel Stackpole to approve. Is there a second?
Second, Madam Mayor.
Second by Counsel Hanselman. Is there a discussion by the council? Seeing none, then I will call the vote. Counsel, oh, I see Counsel Martell, your hand is up. Go ahead.
Yeah, sorry. Can we just go over this one briefly again? I think we have gone over it before, but-
Oh, we went over this, we went over it two, two, two weeks ago when we had the first reading. But I will, I think the planning, the planning director, Beth Delavalli, is here.
Yes, she is. Beth, if you could simply give an encapsulation of what the textual change is as far as creation, creating the residential development overlay district, please.
Sure. So, the zoning text amendment is, as Steve mentioned, to create an overlay zone called the residential development overlay zone. It's proposed to cover four parcels. Actually, one of the parcels is a partial coverage. They're located, the parcels are located off Hanson's Ridge Road. The residential development zone with the overlay district would allow an applicant to make the case that, that is not financially feasible because of the environmental constraints on the property to create a compact residential development, which is the purpose of that zone. The applicant would also have to demonstrate that the proposal is going to minimize impact on existing residential development and residential zones. It would also require a solar project to comply with the standards that are in the rural residential zone. It would also have to document that the property could not feasibly extend public sewer and water that would be necessary to create that compact residential development. And it also has to demonstrate that it's supporting efforts to protect the headwaters of Goodall Brook and vulnerable water bodies. And the last portion of the text amendment lays out some additional submission requirements for that major site plan review for the solar project.
Thank you, Beth.
You're welcome.
Is there any other question? Seeing no hands up, then I will, oh, wait, Counsel Lanigan, go ahead.
Yeah, and it's, it's more just based on past conversations in that area. And I'm totally for the asking. I know that we're, there's another solar project up further into Hanson's Ridge. I believe it's Hanson's property, the old Christmas tree property up there.
Can I just, can I just interrupt you for a minute? Because the discussion needs to be around not the project, but about the zoning amendment.
Yeah, so, so I guess, well, it's if I'm going to vote for the, so, I, I thought that we had talked about not like, not, like, it seems like we're just, we need housing and it seems like we're, we're just clearing land for, for solar projects. And I just, I, I don't know. I guess, I, I have a question about that. Does that restrict more development going further up? You know, we kind of need, like, this puts a huge gap between this and other properties that are further up on Hanson's Ridge that could be developed for residential. So, I mean, extending sewer and water, like, if you, if you have that gap there, now you have to, the next developer on the next lot up has now take on all the costs to get it past these, these properties. So, I guess, my question is, is, is this for a, this is for a solar project and not housing? Just so I, I know I was absent last, last time. So, it's more of a question. Sorry.
So, Beth, can you just go into again the reasons why this property will probably never, would never be housing?
Yep. The property is very, very highly constrained. There's ledge outcroppings, very significant changes in topography. There are a number of wetlands and rural pools on the property as well. There is a water main that actually, there's an easement that extends across the property. I think probably the most direct response of Counsel Lanigan is that back in two thousand and seventeen, the city worked with the Water District and the Sewer District, Public Works and Planning to evaluate the feasibility of development of the, there are eight distinctly separate rural development, excuse me, residential development zones in the city. And so, as part of that analysis, we went through each of those properties and evaluated the difficulty or the feasibility of extending sewer, of extending water, of dealing with drainage issues, looking at the environmental constraints. And of those eight areas, this particular area off of Hanson's Ridge ranks the lowest out of all of those eight areas. So, there are other residential development zones in the city that are much better suited for medium-density residential development. It's very, very unlikely that the private sector would develop this particular property for medium-density residential housing, both because of the environmental constraints and the cost of extending public water and sewer, which would be necessary to support that development pattern.
Okay, so, we're literally, we're taking an untaxed, really minimal tax property and turning it into something that we can tax for a higher rate for our residents?
Absolutely.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. I just want to clarify that. Thank-
Okay, is there any other questions or discussion by the council? Seeing none, then I will call the roll. Counsel Martell?
Yes.
Counsel Hanselman?
Yes.
Counsel Tuttle is absent with notice. Counsel Stackpole?
Yes.
Counsel Lanigan?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hurley has been recused. I am also a yes. That is one, two, three, four, five yeses and one recuse. Motion passed. New business. Twenty-one dash five two eight dash zero one. Order to, one, approve a capital improvement project including infrastructure and road extensions located at the Sanford Seacoast Regional Airport and other expenses reasonably related thereto the project. Number two, appropriate a sum of up to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars plus any additional premium to fund the project. Three, authorize the mayor and the treasurer to issue general obligation securities of the city, including temporary notes in anticipation of the sale thereof in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed two hundred and fifty thousand dollars plus any additional premium to fund the appropriation. And four, delegate to the mayor and treasurer the authority and discretion to fix the dates, maturities, interest rates, denominations, calls for redemptions, with or without premium, form refunding agreements and other details of said securities, including authority to execute and deliver securities, certifications and agreements, including the execution of any loan agreements relating to the purchase and financing on behalf of the city. Do I have a motion to approve?
So, move, Madam Mayor.
Second.
That is a motion by Counsel Hanselman. Is the second by Counsel Stackpole or-
Counsel Lanigan can have that one.
Thank you, Counsel.
Okay, I didn't see him. I didn't see him. So, the second is by Counsel Lanigan.
I think I beat him by just a little bit, but that's okay. You can have it.
All right. Let's not fight over these seconds. Okay, so, any discussion by the council?
I just have a, I just have a quick question. And this would, this would go to our, our previous airport. All this, all, I guess this is, I don't want to put anybody on the spot, so I'll put Steve on the spot. All this delegation to the mayor and city manager and all these kind of things, I'm sure it's all, all right and square and everything. But I just want to ask a question. Is there anything unusual about this? I don't remember hearing anything about all this delegation around the financials and things like that before. And I'm asking this just as a clarifying question for me, but for the public also. Well, so, so you have your bond counsel here tonight, Shawna Mueller, who we put our pledge and faith in to write a, she crosses the Ts and does the Is for us. This, this is the normal delegation as far as the issuance of the debt service for the city. There's, there's nothing that's COVID-specific as far as the delegation of the signatures on this and as far as the approval process is concerned. So, I don't know. Counsel Mueller, if you have any comment on that?
Yeah, I'm happy to just elaborate somewhat because it is, that, that language is not so easily understood, just reading it for the first time. So, I appreciate the question. The, the language is meant to build in some flexibility so that the city can get the best financing arrangement for this two hundred and fifty thousand dollars that it can possibly get. And in order to do that, we want to build in that flexibility to be able to either issue bonds directly through a bank, use the Maine Municipal Bond Bank, and in some circumstances, the city may choose to go out to, you know, a public sale, which in this case is not likely because of the size being as small as it is, it is. But, but that, the, the language is meant to give us that flexibility. And it is very uncommon in my practice for the closing documents to come back to the city council for execution by the full city council. It is very common practice simply for a couple of the officers and officials to be delegated the authority to sign the very large- to be delegated the authority to sign the very large stack of papers that needs to get signed when the closing is coming. Um, so this is really meant to be the opportunity for the council to weigh in and question whether the project or the size of the bond issue is, is something that, you know, should be undertaken. Once you take that action, then the stat, that those officers that you and officials that you delegate the authority to do so can, um, act in the best interest of the city and, and giving effect to this order.
Hey, thanks, thanks for the clarification.
So, we don't hold the money, but the mayor does.
No.
And, and, uh, year-to-date, the analysis, uh, shows that we're gonna, gonna, there. Our best option as far as the finance of this is to continue forward and, and issue this note with the Maine Bond, uh, yeah, Maine Municipal Bond Bank Authority, uh, being our most favorable, uh, capture. They really do a nice job of in cap, uh, of packaging the debt service for us and doing all of the work after the fact of once that's implemented, so. Uh, but we would have the option to go out to banks as well, but at this point in time, the bond bank is our best option.
Thank you again.
Any other questions, any other questions or comments or discussion? Okay, seeing none, we have a motion and a second, I'll call the roll, Council Martell?
Yes.
Council Hanselman?
Yes.
Council Stackpole?
Yes.
Council Lanigan?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hurley?
Yes.
And I am also a yes, that is unanimous of all those present. Twenty-one dash five-two-nine dash zero-one. Order to direct and authorize the city manager to enter into the specific credit enhancement agreement with the owners of the, of Label Tech LLC property and substantially the form as presented to the city council and consistent with the terms of the development program. Do I have a motion to approve?
Move we approve.
Second.
Motion by Council Stackpole and a second by Council Martell. Any discussion by the council? Seeing none, Council Martell?
Uh, yes.
Yes, oh, yeah. Council Hanselman?
Yes.
Council Stackpole?
Yes.
Council Lanigan?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hurley?
Yes.
And I am also a yes, that is unanimous of all those present. Uh, twenty-one dash five-three-zero dash zero-one. Order to authorize and direct the city manager, manager to enter into the specific credit enhancement agreement with the owners of the Sumner Properties LLC property and substantially the form as presented to the city council and consistent with the terms of the development program. Do I have a motion to approve?
Move we approve.
Motion by Council Stackpole, is there a second?
Also, is that Madam Mayor?
Second by Council Hanselman. Any discussion by the council? Seeing none, I'll call the roll, Council Martell?
Yes.
Council Hanselman?
Yes.
Uh, Council Stackpole?
Yes.
Council Lanigan?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hurley?
Yes.
And I am also a yes, that is unanimous of all those present. Twenty-one dash four-four-one dash zero-one. Order to accept a grant offer from the Federal Aviation Administration identified as the General ARPA COVID Relief Grant in the amount of fifty-nine thousand dollars with an offer date of November twenty-twenty-one, the grant agreement for debt service payment, and authorize the city manager to execute the grant agreement on behalf of the City of Stanford.
Move we approve.
Motion by Council Stackpole, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Council Lanigan, or was that?
Totally, I totally beat Martell on that one.
You did, okay, so you can have a second. So, it's a motion by Council Stackpole, second by Council Lanigan. Um, Allison, did you want to present on this? Or just give us the background, but go ahead, we always like grants.
Yeah, this is the third round of COVID relief funding that has come through. This is the, it's part, very similar to the ARPA, um, but for trans, the transportation sector. So, this wasn't something that I was able to apply for or justify additional funding. FA came up with another, another kind of formula that just, based on what kind of airport we are, they just gave a blanket similar amount to every single airport of that type. So, fifty-nine thousand dollars was our amount that we were able to get and, um, an allowable use and one of the easiest things to put it towards is the debt service on our snow removal equipment buildings, so that's what we'll intend to use it for.
Excellent. Any questions from the council? Seeing none, now I'll call the roll, Council Martell?
Yes.
Council Hanselman?
Yes.
Council Stackpole?
Yes.
Council Lanigan?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hurley?
Yes.
And I am also a yes, that is unanimous of all those present.
Thanks very much.
Council member comments? Council Martell?
Um, yeah, something I, I just wanted to bring up, um, I've seen a few posts on Facebook around people having trouble finding bags and I wasn't sure if we had any information on that and whether it was actually an issue or, um, or maybe not. So, I don't, I don't know if there's anybody that has some information on that.
Steve, go ahead.
Yeah, if, if I can, so the, the largest issue has been around the, uh, the eight-gallon bag, which is the smallest bag in the portfolio. Uh, going all the way back to the implementation of the pay-as-you-throw bags, it was advised to us by the, by the, um, by the vendor, um, uh, as far as the utilization of that bag to, to not go that. It, because it's produced so rarely for other municipalities that it's not a normal production run, so they have to change the bag lines down to run that, that eight-gallon bag, uh, size specific for the small number of accounts that, that, that want to utilize that. But, the public hearing process when the, the program was, was implemented, it was made very well known, uh, that there was a segment of the population that wanted that smallest bag. So, it represents about eight percent of the overall sales of bags currently. Uh, it has been problematic getting that particular bag into stock, uh, especially during the staffing shortages of the COVID. Uh, aside from that, there have been, uh, delivery issues, so the, again, the stores order the bags on their own. So, they, they monitor the flow of who's buying what for bags in their particular, uh, businesses and they order those ahead of time. Uh, the company, uh, has been able to keep up with production, but warehousing and shipping, as we know, there's a national crisis around shipping. They've had difficulty sometimes, even when the stores have ordered timely, which they, they do predominantly. They've had some shipping issues and getting those orders to the stores in a timely fashion. So, I've, I've run into an occurrence where I wanted to buy the large bags, I could only get the medium bags. I know those are back in stock now for the particular place that I go to, that I get my bags from, but those are the type of issues that we've run into, not, not different from other supply lines that we experience. Uh, it's just that we hear about this more extensively, the pay-as-you-throw bags than we do most, anything else.
And, and John, I'll, I'll, um, back the city manager up on that, when I owned the store, the deliver, you know, you ordered on time and they promised it to you by Thursday or Friday. Sometimes it took a whole extra week to get it. Um, and it wasn't that you hadn't ordered on time, it was that they were having problems getting it to you in a timely manner. Um, it was frustrating to the point where I start, I tried to stay ahead of it, um, you know, a couple of weeks ahead of it, just to be, make sure I didn't run out. Um, so it is not the greatest system. So, unfortunately, and I don't, I'm not sure they could improve upon it, it's just not the greatest system.
Oh, okay, so, but, but they are available, just somebody might have to shop around a little bit.
They're just, well, if they, if the shipment was poor this week or last week and they didn't get Thursday or Friday, they might not have gotten it till Monday, Tuesday, so by the end of the weekend, a lot of stores would have run out, uh, which is what would happen. And, um, so hopefully they have it before the Thanksgiving holiday, because I agree with you, there's been a lot of Facebook chatter. Uh, if, when people get angry about not being able to find their bag, every topic comes up. Cost of the bag, quality of the bag, why aren't we doing it a different way? Um, it's, it just opens a whole can of worms, so it's, it's tough, it's tough. Facebook really, any opportunity they have to open that topic again, it can be difficult. And it was on my, it was my, I wanted to ask the same, I wanted to comment tonight, John. So, could I ask, I'm just gonna jump off of it now, Steve, could you do me a favor and send me the chart that shows our cost? Um, you know, where we had that expense and income when we were deciding on the cost of the bag, what we were gonna charge for the cost of the bags? So, it shows like, here's our pickup cost, could you send me that little chart? I posted it before and I figured I could post it again because it, it becomes the same conversation as it's going to the general funds and actually paying for the expensive trash. And I like to be, people usually like to see, oh, I guess it is expensive, you know, these are the costs associated with getting rid of household trash. And if the bags do pay that cost, then it's just not, you know, on top of money we've already raised for the bags, so, or for the trash removal and disposal, so.
So, I'll send that out to you, I'll send that out to you, counselor. Uh, I, I will note that in the nine-page document that I handed Ms. Wilton on, on day one, here you go, uh, here's the start, uh, uh, on, on one of those pages is, is, uh, educational programming that, that needs to be done. So, strong recognition on the pay-as-you-throw system, um, that we currently have is, has been in place for nine years now and not until, uh, the last round of, of, uh, recycling, the, the significant changes in recycling that occurred. Did we do any further educational or public outreach around all of the massive changes that have happened in that trash metering program, recycling programs, the loss of those markets, how it's impacted pricing and such? Uh, so that's one of the educational pieces that I've, I've tasked her with is starting the informational campaign, just as, as you're asking now, uh, Council, Deputy Mayor Hurley, about why, why do the bags cost what they cost? What cost is, is encompassed inside of that cost of that bag? Many people think, well, why are those bags so expensive? Hefty bags don't cost that much. Right, these bags don't cost any more than the hefty bags. It's the price that you're paying for them that pays for the service itself, you know? Curbside pickup, uh, recycling pickup, uh, disposition of the, all of the recycling products and paying for the disposal of the MSW itself. So, that's a good educational campaign to start trickling out there using social media and other posts and engaging the people in that type of a concerted conversation.
It's interesting because the poor quality of the bags is the one that really gets people going. It's, uh, the poor quality of the bags, the poor quality of the bags. And so, a la, one of the latest comments was, why aren't you using tags? And if I recall correctly, we chose not to go with tags because it's more likely to be stolen off of someone's trash and retied onto a person's trash. Um, so, yeah, it, it actually is more problematic than the bags and, but if you, if you take a look at what a person says, why don't you use the tags? You almost have to think of the bags as, um, a wrap that you put around your other bag, like your regularly bag trash, as the tag, because nobody's gonna dig out your white bags in order to get that bag. They'll take off a tag, God, I'm rhyming at this point, they'll take off the tag, but they're not gonna take that wrap away and, that, you know, that's what I like to tell people, it's, it's not, the, the bag is not intended to take a huge amount of weight. It's not intended to be lifted, you know, without some, you almost have to grab the white bag in it to lift it or you're gonna rip the bag. So, anyway, I could go on. Anyway, send me the chart, I can, I'm gonna, put that on Facebook.
Can I have my last comment? Um, so I just wanted to, maybe this is something for, for the Solid Waste Committee, but, um, in the event that we had sort of an extended outage of unavailability, I think we should have some sort of backup plan if we don't. Um, so maybe that's something that the Solid Waste Committee can take up or we can have as a future agenda item. That's all I had, thank you.
All right, Council Hanselman, comment?
Thank you, I'm not gonna talk about the orange bags, but I just want to take a moment to say Happy Thanksgiving to everybody who might be listening this evening and, uh, share that I am really grateful, uh, given the opportunity for a second term. I appreciate the folks that, uh, re-elected me to do so. And it's interesting as a city council, some people think we get inundated with constant complaints and a barrage of issues, which we do get those, but we also really get a great perspective into what's happening in our community and choosing the amazing amount of work that's being done, both at the, the city level with our, our city manager and our staff and all of our many department heads and, and the great, um, folks that we have working at a staff level, but also, uh, what's happening in our community with different, so many different organizations and volunteers and people that give their time to our community just, um, you know, day after day. And so, I'm really grateful to be a city councilor, I look forward to next term and, uh, again, everybody has a Happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you, Council Hanselman. Council Stackpole?
Uh, yeah, uh, just, uh, a couple of things. Uh, first of all, uh, uh, everyone knows I'm, uh, pro-vaccination and, uh, uh, you know, by choice, uh, and, uh, I'm gonna say, four or five months ago, I heard a doctor say on TV, you either get the vaccination or you get COVID-nineteen. Uh, now, that sounded really like it was pretty far out, four or five months ago. But when, uh, the city manager was going over the statistics tonight, it's kinda like, yeah, that, it was, it's right on. You either get vaccinated or you get COVID-nineteen. Uh, and even if you're vaccinated, um, uh, you, you have COVID-nineteen. For the record, my wife and I, my whole family, my extended family, my grandkids are now getting vaccinated. Everybody's had both shots, my wife and I both had our boosters, we got them right here in town. Uh, so, uh, it, it, it can be done, uh, certainly, uh, without a lot of effort. So, uh, please take care of yourselves out there. Uh, and I just wanted to pass along also, uh, Happy Thanksgiving. I do want to say to Council Hanselman, who I know is headed, uh, south down to Philadelphia, I heard that in the, uh, that, uh, I was disappointed because I just got back from Philadelphia visiting my grandson that my favorite cheesesteak place has now been closed because of COVID-nineteen called Steve's. So, now I'm recommending a place called Sonny's, which is just down the street from Independence Hall. So, if you're in the mood for a cheesesteak while you're down there, Council Hanselman, that's the place to go.
It's, it's a must, so thank you, I'll write that down.
Remember, it's a whiz wit, whiz wit.
The best place to get a cheesesteak.
Thank you, Council Stackpole, uh, Council Lanigan?
Yes, I have a couple items tonight. First, I want to congratulate, uh, Councilor Hanselman off her council race. I, I wasn't here the last meeting, so I just wanted to congratulate you and, uh, that the city's very fortunate to have, uh, such a hard-working woman, um, in, in all fronts of it, not in just city government, but the stuff you do on the side, the volunteering and all that, so, uh, congratulations, it's well-earned. Um, also, Council-elect, Becky Brink, it's exciting to have her come aboard, some new, new blood on the council. So, it'll be, uh, cool to see what she accomplishes, uh, with this great team and, uh, just wanted to congratulate you there. Uh, Happy Thanksgiving, of course, to everybody out there, you know? Be safe, have fun, don't talk politics around the table. Um, and then, uh, the other thing, uh, I wanted to mention, Small Business Saturday. Uh, we have a lot of new small businesses in our community and, uh, Small Business Saturday is, uh, this Saturday, the Friday after Thanksgiving, um, this weekend. So, just, uh, make sure you get out and support your small business. And then holidays, I don't know if you're gonna talk about that, Mayor, but I think holidays is, uh, the December third, correct? And we're not gonna have a meeting before then. So, just to remember, lighting of the tree, Santa Claus coming through town, I think we're doing a parade this year. So, a lot of good stuff there. And, um, I won't be here next meeting. Um, like I said, leaving the council, one of the biggest reasons was my kids and I, I'm going to a Playboy Cardi concert, I guess, with seven other fourteen-year-olds as their chaperones. So, I will be definitely.
Sorry.
Yeah, I, I'm a music guy and I probably would rather sit through a four-hour council meeting. So, I'm just letting you know, it's not that I don't want to be here because I probably would rather be there, um, than that concert, but I, I won't be, I won't be around. So, I just wanted to wish everybody, uh, a great Thanksgiving and, and see you guys soon.
Council Lanigan?
Yes.
Don't forget your earplugs.
No, thank.
Deputy Mayor Hurley?
Uh, just, nothing a lot, no, um, just, just, everybody seems to get confused that the transfer stations always close the Monday, the Tuesday after a Monday holiday and it's based on the schedule of people who work at the transfer station. So, the same thing does not apply to a middle-of-the-week holiday like Veterans Day that we had last week and, um, Thursday's, uh, Thanksgiving, they are open Wednesday and they will be open Friday and Saturday. So, just so everybody knows, it's pretty normal down at the transfer station when we have a middle-of-the-week holiday. Uh, the other thing I wanted to say is, you know, last year, Happy Thanksgiving, everybody. Last year, we bought a tent, put up a tent outside, had a very, you know, put tons of heaters, had a chilly outdoor Thanksgiving. This year, I am lucky enough to have an entire family fully vaccinated that I get to spend Thanksgiving with and there's only two little kids that won't be vaccinated, so we should actually have a really nice Thanksgiving and I'm excited for that. So, I hope everybody else has a great Thanksgiving as well.
Do they? No.
What?
I said, do you make them stay outside?
No, they're probably, they probably, they're, they probably had their first shot, they're, um, six or seven, I think he's seven, and like ten or eleven, they're just, so, but their parents would have already had the first shots in them and now they'll be fine. Their parents, to keep them very safe, they're good little mask wearers, so.
There you go.
Okay, I just want- Okay, I just want to remind people that we do have a meeting next Tuesday. So I don't know what meeting you were speaking about, Council Lanigan, was it next Tuesday? Or the regular council meeting and the first council meeting in December?
All right, the, the regular council meeting on the 7th, yeah. I am, I will be there next Tuesday for the workshop.
Next Tuesday, we have a, right, we have an ARPA workshop followed by an executive session with the city manager.
You want to be at the ARPA workshop?
Yes, I'm definitely.
And it will be by Zoom. I also want to acknowledge that Council-elect Becky Brink attended most of our subcommittee meetings last week, and I appreciate her getting up to speed, and I appreciate you attending tonight's meeting. Good to see you and good to have you on board. So that's all I have for comments. Future agenda items. Council Martell?
Madam Mayor, City Manager Buck's trying to get your attention.
Oh, you, go ahead.
Yep, if I could, before you go there, so I wanted to back up, you know, Council Lanigan mentioned the holidays parade. Just, these are one of those things that I, I wish I never had to have such conversations, but because of the recent occurrence in Wisconsin, right? You know, today was, was a hot wash down on what additional measures we, we will be doing for holidays parade. So we already had police escort front and rear, so we bolstered that. We've got side streets covered to a greater extent than before as far as utilization of patrols and ATVs to, to monitor and prevent traffic infiltration on side streets. And the major intersections will be covered as part of that parade route as well. So it's just, it, it just, it's crazy out there. I just want the public to know that we, we are accounting for that as well here for the safety of our holidays parade, so everybody can enjoy that parade and have fewer worries about that. So thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Okay, agenda items, and this is the last thing that we have to go through. Council Martell? Any agenda items that you haven't mentioned?
Uh, no, nothing I haven't mentioned. Thank you.
Okay, Council Hanselman?
Just one, thank you. I'd love to just discuss Chapter 114, disorery properties, whether that's at public safety or elsewhere, in regards to whether or not we might want to adapt that chapter to be applicable to commercial locations, in particular related to some of the issues at Midtown Mall. So just want to explore whether that's something that would make sense or not.
Okay. Council Stackpole? Nothing? Okay, Council Lanigan? Nothing? Deputy Mayor Hurley?
No, I'm going to just support Council Hanselman because I drove to work this morning, and even in the early morning hours, it's not great.
I do, I do have a question, Madam Mayor, sorry. And, and.
Go ahead.
Has there been any work on the, on the recreational marijuana zoning ordinance? I mean, been a long time.
We can have an update on that. We all have an update on that at the end of the meeting, okay?
Yes, there has.
Yeah, there's been work on it, but we will get an update on it eventually. Okay, I guess I'll declare us adjourned. Happy Thanksgiving, everyone. Thank you.
Thank you.